This is the Palo Alto Weekly Election Forum for the seven candidates for Palo Alto City Council. I'm Jocelyn Dong, the editor of the Palo Alto Weekly. And co-hosting this forum is City Hall reporter Janati Shaner. Give away of Janati. So this event is being co-sponsored by two outstanding community organizations. The Palo Alto Chinese Parents Club and the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to both groups for partnering with us tonight. So the mission of the Palo Alto Weekly is to provide accurate and reliable information to community members. So that you can make up your own minds about the issues impacting your lives. This event is part of that mission, a chance for you to learn about the perspectives of the seven people. Who wish to represent you over the next four years. There are three seats open on the council and no incumbents in the race. And now, before we welcome the candidates, let me tell you how this debate is structured. The questions presented in this year's forum have largely been informed by the input. From our readers, which they submitted to us starting in August. And these questions touched upon everything from the practical, like how do we move ahead with redesigning the rail crossings? To the aspirational, how do we as a community become more tightly knit together rather than becoming more fragmented? Janati and I will lead the candidates through different rounds of hot button topics. Giving time limits for their answers to keep things fair. We may ask a follow-up question of a candidate if an answer isn't clear. But to keep the candidates within their time limits, you will see a timer on the screen and it will be counting down. We will have a round for audience questions tonight, so if you are in Zoom and have a question. You can type it at the bottom in the Q and A box and we'll pick some of those to pose to the candidates. We just ask that you submit those questions before about eight o'clock. Okay, now, without further ado, we welcome the candidates for city council. We thank them for being here. To introduce themselves, we asked each to pick one of the following three questions to answer. Question one, what are two things you love about living in Palo Alto? Or how would you define success as a city council member? Or what is your favorite Palo Alto landmark or activity? So the first candidate is Realtor Alex Comsa, who will be followed by Lisa Forcell. And Alex, you have thirty seconds for this first question.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm going for the first question, what are two things you love about living in Palo Alto? One of the reasons I moved in Palo Alto in 2010 is the diversity of our community. Thirty-five percent of Palo Alto consists of immigrants and this number is growing as we speak. As an immigrant and having spent half of my life in Europe. It is great to be exposed to so many cultures and it is perfect to, it is a perfect fit to grow a family. The second one is sense of community and I'm privileged to be living and working in Palo Alto. I truly feel like I belong to this wonderful community. I want this feeling to be experienced by our essential workers. And I will address that in my smart housing proposal.
Thank you so much, Alex. The next person is creative technology professional Lisa Forcell, who will be followed by Brian Hamatchek. Lisa.
Thank you. What I love about Palo Alto is I love the people here. I love the neighbor kids who ring the doorbell to ask if my twelve-year-old can come out and play tag. I love our teachers and our librarians and our cashiers at Aides Cafe. I love all the folks that I've met while I've been out knocking on doors. And who asked me about everything from climate change to sidewalk maintenance. I loved Betty who bought her home from Joe Eichler himself in nineteen fifty-three. And who used to regale us with stories of how the neighborhood had evolved over the years. That's my one thing because I really feel like the people here are everything.
Thanks, Lisa. We have entrepreneur and software engineer Brian Hamatchek. And he will be followed by Ed Lauer. Brian.
So I chose to do my favorite Palo Alto landmark and hands down mine would be the Gamble Gardens. Because it's so quintessentially Palo Alto, really, even from the story of how it got started, being gifted to the city. But growing up, I, I would, after dinner, my dad and I, a couple of times a week would walk down there and feed the fish and then. Throughout my life, I've always gone back to the gamble for different purposes. I still go there. At least once a week now, just to walk the gardens. So that's my favorite part of Palo Alto.
That's great. And we have executive recruiter Ed Lauer. He'll be followed by Julie Lithcott-Hames.
Yeah, I picked the question about the, what do you think, the two things you like about Palo Alto? As being the active civic engagement of our residents and also the quality of life here. That's really what I've enjoyed the most in the last twelve years when I've served on the two commissions that I have. Because I love hearing the diverse perspectives from these engaged residents and then. After hearing that, luckily, I've been able to have the opportunity to get a few things done for the community across a broad spectrum. You know, from prioritizing housing needs to adding parkland to tackling some of the parking issues. But with this amazing citizen engagement, we just collectively can create an even better quality of life in Palo Alto and that feels pretty good.
Thank you, Ed. We've got author and educator Julie Lithcott-Hames, followed by Doria Suma.
I chose question two, define success as a council member. Today I was stepping into the elevator at Pamp when I heard someone else coming, so I held the door. In walked a set of new parents carrying their baby girl, two weeks old, in an infant carrier. Success as a council member means building trust in those parents. That our city, its staff, leadership and residents will embrace their family. And that as their baby girl grows to adulthood, there will always be a place for her to live and thrive in Palo Alto.
That's great. Thank you. Community volunteer Doria Suma and then Vicky Vinker.
So I also love the people of Palo Alto, friends, neighbors, all kinds of people, Stanford scientists, Nobel Prize winners. My favorite mailman, people I meet through advocacy groups, groundwater people, airplane noise people. And people I meet at Stanford Summer Course. And my second thing is hands down are beautiful open spaces. The Baylands, Arastodaro and Foothills Park. I love wildlife. I'm sort of. In love with all the flora and fauna of California. I like to, oops, spot it all.
Thanks. Thanks for observing the time there. Finally, rounding us out, we have mediator and patent attorney Vicky Vinker.
Well, like Lisa and Doria, what I love about living in Palo Alto is our incredible residents. I love that the guy maintaining our church organ invented the computer, computer mouse. That one neighbor is a retired custodian and another a tech executive. That Buena Vista residents hold fabulous passadas. That high schools often provide the best, high schoolers often provide the best public comments at city council. And that my daughter's soccer team tried on the gold medal of a former Gunn High School student who was on the women's Olympic team. My fellow residents are what I love about Palo Alto.
All right, now that we have a little glimpse into who the seven people are who are running for your votes. Now we're going to move into what Janati has called the appetizer round. It is a thirty-second answers on four different questions. Janati and I will trade off those questions. The topics will be grade separations, conversion to electricity, housing and then renters. We'll take the candidates in alphabetical order, rotating which one starts first each question for fairness. Janati, will you get us started?
Yes, thank you, Jocelyn, and thank you candidates and roughly three hundred attendees and the many others watching after the fact from at home. So the note appetizer is accurate for this question because this, this might be the most complicated and big question that we have in the debate. Is the billion-dollar question around grade separations, which is something that councils have debated for the last decade or so. And the question is, what factors would you use to make a decision on the designs? For the Caltrain grade separation and we will start with Lisa Forcell and go alphabetically from there. Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. We have a real opportunity to make the crossings at Meadow and Charleston and Churchill and Palo Alto have safer and more convenient. I favor the designs that really prioritize separating bikes and pedestrians from car traffic while still offering vehicle access. So I will be approaching it with an eye towards those priorities. And. We mainly just need to pick an option and allocate the funds and get going on construction.
Sorry, Brian Hamatchek is next. And let me know if you need me to repeat the question, by the way.
So I think the most important thing is that we just pick an option at this point. I think that everybody's ready for this to get out of discussions and into implementation. That being said, if I was to have my way, I would go back and reverse the decision to take the tunnel off the table because. I think when we're looking at a future Palo Alto, that's the option that's going to be the best for Palo Alto. Get the trains out of sight, don't put a wall down the middle of the city, but I think at this point, we just need to pick any option.
I'm sorry, Ed Lauer would be next.
Okay, thanks. Yes, I definitely wouldn't agree with, with, with what Mr. Hamatchek said. We have to pick an option that makes fiscal sense, but it starts with safety for pedestrians as well as anyone, obviously, that's going across those rail. The second thing is obviously it has to be funded, but we can't do that, obviously, with the sort of cheapest bid. We have to figure out what's best for the very long term because that's how long it's gonna, gonna be here. So, and, and we have to make a citywide, regional-wide decision, not just. Take a poll of, you know, the three crossings and, and the, the folks in that neighborhood. It's a very, very big decision.
Thank you. And Julie Lithcott-Hames is next.
We were residents of San Carlos before we moved to buy our home in Palo Alto in two thousand. And San Carlos did its grade separation fifteen to twenty years ago and it. I wish we had done that then because Caltrain is electrifying and bringing more trains per hour down our way. And we're about to hit grid like, gridlock like we've never seen. So look, safety, traffic, I'm also interested in community character. For that reason, I kind of like the viaduct. Let's put the train up like the Jetsons. I like the tunnel. Let's put it down below. Either one of those is fine with me.
Great, thank you so much. And Doria Suma is next up.
Thanks so much. So for me, safety is first, safety and traffic flow would be first. I have a preference for. Selecting Palo Alto Avenue and. The Transit Center holistically is part of the downtown study, which I'm hoping will start soon. Churchill and Charleston should probably be underpasses, I mean, not Churchill. Meadow and Charleston should be underpasses and I'd like to do the three bike pad crossings first to facilitate movement.
Thank you so much. And Vicky Vinker is next.
So when you ask about the factors, I would also prioritize safety, including separating bikes and pedestrians from the cars and trains. But I also would look at neighborhood input and see what they thought, because it's different in the different neighborhoods. But also look at feasibility, look at the geotechnical analysis. It's tougher to put trains underground some places than others. But the, the cost is always a factor. But we should deal with this quickly. There is a sense of urgency because there's historic federal and state dollars available if we can do this quickly.
Great, thank you so much. And last but not least, Alex Comsa.
Yeah, so we definitely prioritize safety as a father and also the impact on our neighborhoods. If, if money no option, I would definitely go with the tunnel option. That would definitely be my first preference, but I'm afraid that we have to compromise for. An underpass on East Meadow and Charleston and also for the partial underpass for Churchill. And I would like to see the Churchill kind of starting in conjunction with the, with the Embarcadero as well. And I know, I know that we have a lot of work to do on the Palo Alto crossing as well.
Great, thank you. It's, it's, it's a big ask for thirty seconds to deal with great separations, but thank you for taking a stab at it. And I'll kick it over to Jocelyn for, to talk about natural gas.
Yes, we've got a lot of questions or concerns about the electrification of Palo Alto and moving from natural gas to electricity. One reader wrote in that he or she was trying to replace. An appliance, but the city required a whole house upgrade, which costed significantly more than expected. But as the city has set its sustainability goals. It has also determined that we need to convert three quarters, more than three quarters of single-family homes from gas to electric appliances. So the question is, what programs would you favor to get the city to this electrification goal? And how would you address some of the concerns of residents who want to keep their gas appliances and even purchase new ones in the future? That's a mouthful, but we'll start with Brian Hamatchek.
Home, I think the one program that the city or the utilities department could do would be to offer financing. For these upgrades because they can be rather expensive, a lot more expensive than the gas appliances. But over the long term, I think that most of them actually pay for themselves. So. Just helping with financing upfront, I think would be one great way to help with the transition. Yeah.
Great, thanks. Ed Lauer is next.
Well, in, in terms of the way you asked that question, which took longer than thirty seconds, by the way.
I'm under no limits.
So I think we have to first look at transforming the commercial buildings. And we can do that, I think, a little bit, a little bit more quickly. Definitely when we get to residential, that's going to need some, some probably multiple kinds of financing. And we're definitely not ready to be turning off the gas right now. So we have to plan that out to a reasonable timeframe and not have that be a threat hanging over the head of our citizens.
All right, thank you, Ed. Julie Lithcott-Hames.
Well, look, I didn't use to get that the environment mattered. I thought there were other issues that mattered more. I have been converted. I'm that person that can help other people come to that same realization. We now have solar panels. We now have a hybrid car, an electric car in our driveway. Last week, we ripped out our gas furnace and replaced it with an electric heat pump. But I'm able to do that because I'm upper-middle class. We took out a home equity loan to finance it for the rest of the city, including everybody. We want to get to twenty thirty-five, gas-free. Let's put it on the bill, on-bill financing subsidies for poorer families. Let's all get there together.
All right, Doria Suma is next.
Thanks. So I'm all for electrification, but like some of my, some of you, I think this transition has to. Be, the timeframe has to be, not leave people behind and we have to do it in a manner that we are sure our local infrastructure and the state infrastructure. Can handle it and that means that we can purchase green energy. I'm very mindful of the fact that Diablo Canyon was kept open just a couple of weeks ago by the state legislature. Because it provides about nine percent. That's the nuclear plant of our energy.
Okay. And moving on to Vicky Vinker.
Well, we do need to move rapidly to move away from fossil fuels in both our homes, buildings and under cars. And so we need a plan as we do this to have a systemic upgrade over time for our grid. And as we do this, the community will begin to experience a convenient transition. They'll realize the health benefits from this. They'll realize it's reliable. And they'll realize that it's cost-effective. And so doing that should help set the incentives itself. If we need some upfront cost assistance and subsidies, I would support that because this is critical that we do.
Okay, Alex Comsa.
Yes, I will research, I will research incentives as a source for creating new programs. The city could be bold and implement a deadline for no gas hookups by twenty twenty-five or twenty thirty. But in order to have an immediate impact, I believe we need to address the big consumers of natural gas, about forty-five percent. Which are gas-based water heaters. In fact, it is a lot cheaper to replace the water heater than switching to an electric space heating system, three thousand dollars versus thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's the way I would probably go first for immediate.
Thank you. Thanks, Alex. And Lisa Forcell.
Yeah, so I'm excited about Palo Alto's transition away from fossil fuels and over to clean electric energy. We need to skate where the puck is going, not where it's been. So as the California grid gets cleaner and cleaner, we are matching that. With our appliances. I think we definitely need help financing. We need outright subsidies. And on-bill financing and we also need to remove friction and make it really easy for people, streamline permitting, help installing the appliances.
All right, thanks for addressing that issue. Back to Janati.
Great, thank you all. Now we get to the fun topic of housing. And the question is very topical, given that city council is now in the midst of submitting its new housing element. And the question is, don't time yet. Do you support high-density housing that is two or three times that of underlying zoning? And if so, where? And we're actually gonna start with Ed on this one.
Yes, as you know, I was on the Housing Element Working Group and then PTC, so been kind of working on this for the last couple of years. We have to have more density and particularly as that. Has to be emphasized with the lower income brackets and the entry-level BMR units for creating diversity in town. So we have to make those kinds of changes. It's not going to be concentrated in one place. It will be spread in a number of areas around town, but we should look for an area where we can have some large projects and get some benefit from that, from that density.
Thank you very much. Julie Lithcott-Hames, same question.
Probably our greatest issue is not enough housing. Housing is a human right. Humans need shelter, period. We got to build a lot more of it. So yes, I'm in favor of higher density, two to three times what is the current underlying zoning and if so, where? Look, I live on the South Side. I don't want it all here on the South Side. I want the entire city to do its fair share. Let's look at the neighborhoods, figure out where a single-family, it's gonna, we might add some ADUs and JDUs. I'm out of time, sorry. Spread it out, make it happen.
Thank you so much. And Doria Suma.
Yep, well, so we don't have a choice. We're going to get denser. That's a given. And I think we can do that and still keep a lot of the amenities that people enjoy in Palo Alto. I would just note that the so-called VTA lot is a half acre and has approximately fifty units. And so that's, or sixty units, and so that would be a hundred and twenty units per acre. Our current largest zoning is much smaller than that, so. At RM forty, so I think we can do it and still keep it a livable scale.
Thank you so much. Vicky Vinker.
So, so I'll make it unanimous so far. Yes, I support higher density. I support it throughout town, but I think it can work well near transit and downtowns. That's where I think we can get the bang for the buck because people who live there, I want to care about their quality of life as well. And so I want them to have, to live in a place where they have services and other things to help them. And I want to reduce, the good, the benefit of that is it reduces carbon emission and traffic as well.
Great, thank you so much. And Alex Comsa, please. I'm sorry, Alex, you're still on mute.
All right. Yes, of course, I support high density. In fact, there's a California density bonus law in place and a lot of developers are taking advantage of that. High density means smaller units, so a great impact when it comes to climate change as well. I think we should switch to a more proactive approach and target large opportunities to create housing and preserve the character of Palo Alto. Instead of focusing on dozens of small infill projects. I need, I think we need to be in the driver's seat, not to be at the mercy of developers or other similar organization. So yes, I do support high density.
Great, thank you. And Lisa Forcell.
Yeah, I support higher-density housing to get out in front of the state mandates. We need to make specific area plans so that we get green space and amenities along with the density. I want to distribute the, the new development evenly throughout the city. I want to look at downtown, including the Transit Center. There's an interesting discussion last night about the area around town and country. I want to look at city-owned parking lots, El Camino, San Antonio, Bay Shore. We also need to make sure we look at our local transit to get people from the new housing to their local jobs and make sure traffic doesn't get worse.
Thank you. And Brian Hamatchek.
I support higher density in certain instances. I think it's the only way that we're going to be able to get the affordable housing that the city desperately needs. I would just be really cautious about the location and the nature of it. I think we've all seen projects in other cities that have just gone off the rails and changed the entire character of the city. And I would be really mindful of that when evaluating any kind of project about higher density.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Now we're going to shift to another topic that's actually being discussed as we speak by City Council Committee. And that's the topic of renter protections and I'll kick this over to Jocelyn.
Yes, this is the kind of a meta discussion, I guess, because we are talking about the thing they're talking about over in City Hall. So on the subject of renters, renters make up nearly half of Palo Alto's population. And last November, the council passed a package of renter protection policies. Staff is currently developing a rental survey program that would collect information, including rent increases and evictions. Do you support this package of protections and do you think the city should take further steps such as rent stabilization? We'll start with Julie Lithcott-Hames.
With forty-six percent of our residents renting, we have to center their needs. I'm very excited about what the city has done so far. When I listen to renters, what I hear from them is they need to be protected as renters. Their community as renters needs to be preserved and we need more rental housing. Those are the three Ps that I'll be advocating for. Right now, what I hear renters want to need is a rent registry. Who's renting? Where? Who's the landlord? What does it cost? Who's getting evicted and why? Let's start there.
Thank you. Doria Suma.
Yes, I'm extremely excited about the renter protection package. It came through the Planning Commission and I supported it very strongly. You know, renters are really worried there, they have no certainties in some cases. I, I think because we don't enforce the one-year lease law, I would like to see that enforced. It's impossible for tenants to do it themselves. And I would also like to have a better understanding of how much Section Eight rentals we are finding in our community. I don't think we have any good data on that and I'm sure that the feds do. Thanks.
Thank you. Vicky Vinker.
I am really delighted about our rental registry to track both the increases and eviction notices. And I think we also could track where tenants are being offered those one-year leases that they are, they are required to be offered. So that people aren't getting away with shorter ones. So that would be important to me as well. I've been on the board of the Law Foundation. We've done renter protection work for twenty years when I've been with them. And it's, this is really critical and that's also why I would support the rent stabilization. Our state law says ten percent per year as a, as a cap. That's an awful lot. I would explore even more.
Thank you. Next is Alex Comsa.
Rental market is very confusing and forty-six of Palo Altons are renters. More affordable units would create a pool for renters to have access to as alternatives in case tenants need to be relocated. If the city would have affordable housing within its portfolio, then assistance to renters in need could be provided very effectively. So again, more affordable houses would alleviate some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Forcell.
Thanks. I, I really appreciate the work of the recently formed Palo Alto Renters Association. And I'm glad to have some leadership amongst the renters to engage with on questions that affect renters. I support the package of renter protections that is currently being considered. We definitely need to implement that rental registry. We need data in order to create good public policy. Palo Alto should not tolerate tenant harassment in any form. I agree, we need to preserve, protect and ultimately produce more housing so that renters have options.
Thank you. Brian Hamatchek.
Yeah, I spent a little over a decade renting in Palo Alto, so this is definitely something that. It comes close to home for me. I think that the current renter protection package that's been put together. Comp, is a good compromise between the two extremes and I support it. I do not support going further and doing rent stabilization. I think that that could have a pretty chilling effect and we should be really careful before we go to that extreme.
Thank you. And Ed Lauer.
Yeah, thanks. As Doria said, we worked on this very hard at Palo Alto, at the Planning Commission. And passed about seven, recommended about seven things to council. The, starting with the rental registry, which is being acted on tonight, as you said. One of the other things that we've been pushing for through PTC and got it through the Housing Element and now has been approved by council. Is adding the, what's called the Palmer fix and the just quick translation is that we can now get seven, fifteen percent inclusionary housing. Low market rate for rentals, which is, is really, really important because we're going to go well over fifty percent in the next ten years on renters.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to move to our next round. And this is our so-called entree round, so you have a little bit more meat to chew on. This is sixty seconds for each answer. There are four questions and the topics are public safety, housing again, office development. There are four questions and the topics are public safety, housing again, office development, and building bridges. So Janati, will you start us off with public safety?
Absolutely. The question on public safety is how can the Palo Alto Police Department make sure that Palo Alto officers operate in a fair and biased way? And we're going to start with Doria Suma on this one. And you have 60 seconds.
Okay, thank you. So I think, I'm sorry. I knew that was going to happen. I think the best way, I think we're already taking steps to do that. I think the the new police chief Andrew Bender is going to really work hard on this. I was talking to him the other day and he's really impressive. That they are already, we have a PERC program so that the police have a mental health official expert go along with the police when that's appropriate because police are not really trained to deal with mental health issues. We have our radios unencrypted woo-hoo. And we're going to have an auditor meet with the council, an independent police auditor twice a year. So that's a very good start. I think there's a perception in Palo Alto that it's not as safe as it used to be and people are really scared. We really need also to hire more staff in both fire and police so that our, I get back to those levels. It's fallen over 30% in the last 50 years. It's not just the COVID problem. So staffing would be a good start too.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Vicki Winker.
This is a really critical topic. I'm glad you brought it up. My, my husband is a victim advocate and it's important that our police department operate in an unbiased way, both for those whom they're investigating and also for the other people involved in the circumstance. I strongly support the reforms that we've had over the last couple of years. And I think that this recent partnering that the department has done with several complementary programs, when they respond to calls involving unhoused persons or persons exhibiting behavioral health issues is really important. Doria just mentioned the PERC program, the psychiatric emergency response team, which responds to calls involving mental health issues by sending a trained professional clinician alongside the police officer. This is really important because it will de-escalate these situations and avoid criminalizing poverty or mental or behavioral health. I also would like to have ongoing diversity training. I think that's very important for culturally competent policing. And that would help, help also avoid some of the biased and unfair practices that we've seen in the past.
Great, thank you so much. Alex Combs, please.
Yes, first I would like to mention that I'm being endorsed by former chief police Dennis Burns, who was viewed positively by our community. I also had the conversations this week with Andrew Binder and the police chief. And both agreed that we need to restore public safety in our town by having appropriate police staff. We got about nine openings now, I believe, seven for officers and for dispatchers. And I think we really need to do that. And some of the business tax funds, you know, will address that as well. And probably we'll talk about that later. Andrew also pointed out that the removal of the radio encryption in order to restore public access to communications is getting nothing but positive feedback from community members. And I'm super glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa Porcel.
Our community is pretty concerned about recent reports of crimes, a lot of property crime, catalytic converter theft, package theft, jewelry theft. I've talked to a lot of people who want increased police presence in their neighborhoods. And I think having police on patrol, getting to know the community is really important. People had to, sorry, the police had to cut a lot of staff during the pandemic budget cuts. It's one of the reasons I support Measure K, the business tax, because that will provide funds to help staff our police department back up. We still have work to do on the use of force and profiling. The most recent independent police auditor report had several recommendations. I'm fairly optimistic that our new police chief Andrew Bender is working on these. I'm, like others, encouraged by the new psychiatric emergency response team that pairs a mental health professional with a police officer responding to calls from a person in mental distress. So on the whole, I'm optimistic, especially if we can pass Measure K.
Great, thank you. And Brian Hamcheck.
Yeah, I think I'm rather optimistic that we're moving in the right direction. Finally, I think that decrypting the police radio might seem like a small thing, but it's actually kind of an indication of a broader change in the way that they're viewing, interacting with the public. And so I was really encouraged when I, when I saw that the new police chief decided to do that. And I'm pretty encouraged by a lot of the things I've seen from him so far. And then I'll echo what a lot of other people have said in that I think if we want the police department to be operating at its you know, best abilities, we need to support them and we need to get their staffing levels back to where they used to be because right now they're probably overworked and stressed. And if we want the, the best from them, we need to support them.
Great, thank you. And Ed Lowen.
Thanks. I mean, as always, this starts with people. A lot of us have already mentioned people in a positive way and the, the force itself has to change. There has to be a lot more diversity in the officers that are hired and trained and promoted. And that's diversity of gender, which would really help in police as well as diversity of ethnicity. And that is not an instant task, but the chief is committed to that. We know that. I think the reforms have been put into place are great, but they're still on paper. We got to make sure that through oversight with the auditor and the chief himself, that those things are being done in the real world and we're going to get rid of the lawsuits caused by actual problems. So I think that's very good. The other side of the question, now that I've addressed the question is we need to get the crime down. Luckily, it's not major crimes. But I'm not impressed when people tell me that the stats haven't changed. I don't care about the stats. I care about the crimes. And people crashing into cars in windows in front of my house and other places is what we're trying to treat with a different way of approaching it.
Great, thank you. And Julie Lithcott-Hames.
I want to begin by noting that Janati's question asked us about how Palo Alto officers could operate in a fair and unbiased way. And I'm a little stunned that we've gotten this far without anybody mentioning George Floyd or black people. As an African-American candidate, I can't help but think about this on a regular basis. It's not politics. It's not policy. It's personal. So when I think about how to ensure that our officers operate in a fair and unbiased way, I'm delighted that Andrew Bender has been confirmed. Race was also barely addressed at his confirmation before council, which stunned me. We can't tame what we can't name. We have to be able to talk frankly about these things. I've gotten background from Dennis Burns, who used to be the chief. Look, I love PERC. Let's increase PERC by four times so they can cover 24/7, 365. And let's do away with canine dogs that tend to go after brown-skinned people. Let's have more implicit bias training and let's bring back specialty positions. That's what attract our officers to work in a city that pays them less than elsewhere.
Great, thank you so much. And we will shift back to housing now and I'll hand this back over to Justin.
So not surprisingly, housing was one of the top questions that were asked by our readers or questions submitted by our readers to ask you. And the range goes from needing, wanting to see more housing, wanting to see more affordable housing, and then concerns that neighborhood character would somehow change within this whole next decade or so. So the question is, how do you balance these seemingly conflicting perspectives among a diverse resident population? The person we're going to start with is Vicki Winker.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had to get off mute. So yes, there has been a shift, I think, a growing consensus amongst Palo Altons that we do need more housing, especially affordable housing to have a balanced community. And I think we can do that while maintaining our neighborhood characteristics. We have a lot of different kinds of neighborhoods already. We also have a lot of different kinds of housing within those neighborhoods. At the beginning, when I said what I liked about Palo Altons, I mentioned the retired janitor across the street and the tech executive next door. I think what we need to do is we need to be planful about it. And we need to take better advantage of the comprehensive area plans in our code that are meant to have sort of the holistic look instead of just what the housing element can do, which can say, oh, there's some space over there and some space over there. Or what council often ends up with, the developer came here, there, they look more holistically and can take into a town, neighborhood characteristics. ADUs, JDUs do that. There's lots of ways to do that.
Thank you, Vicki. Alex Combs is next.
Yes, I have a very balanced approach to housing. Smart housing specifically is one of my top priorities. But conserving the character of Palo Alto is key, and I think it's possible to accomplish both. We have to rely on feedback from ARB members and I'm pleased to have received endorsements from two of the current and former ARB members. I also think that we have to be proactive instead of reacting to state mandates and we have to get into the driver's seat. We have to identify neighborhoods like other candidates mentioned just previously that are a good fit for high-density housing. So we could maintain the character of our small town, but also address the state mandates. And I do have, obviously I'm running out of time, but I do have a comprehensive plan on how we can achieve both. So I'd be more than happy to elaborate more at a later time.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Lisa Porcel.
How to balance the needs of, on some level, sort of the old neighborhoods versus the new neighborhoods. You know, I like to say the character of the neighborhood is the characters in the neighborhood. And I think the key aspects of our neighborhoods is not whether they are a single-family home neighborhood or a multifamily home neighborhood. The key aspects are people in the neighborhoods, the green space, the parks, the trees, the fact that they're walkable and bikeable and safe and have access to our amenities like our parks and our libraries. Going forward, how to balance these needs is to, is to spell out what we want. I think we really need to make specific area plans for the new areas that are under consideration for development. Spell out that we want trees and green space and walkable and bikeable and safe. And the, you know, and the trade-off will be a little bit of density. And I think that I welcome that and I welcome the new community members that we're all going to benefit from when they get to live here.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up is Brian Hamcheck.
Yeah, I think that it's actually not too difficult to, to maintain that character that we all love in Palo Alto. And I think the key is to listen to the residents. Because I think that they understand the character of their neighborhood the best and that they're going to be the most impacted by a lot of these projects. And so we need to listen to them and we need to push back against developers. If it's not going to fit the character of Palo Alto, the city should take a tougher stand sometimes, I think. One of the reasons why I decided to run was the Castalea Expansion Project, which I feel was really poorly handled and really ignored the residents that were spending about five years campaigning against that. I think that we need to be listening to the residents. That's how we're going to keep the character of Palo Alto from changing from underneath us.
Thanks very much. Ed Lowen.
Yeah, thanks. The, the statement that we need more housing is absolutely correct. And that's actually already taken care of because we need relative to our state mandates, housing in every category that you can name from market rate down to under 50% AMI. So, so that's a given. The, the question is, how do we prioritize that and get what we need to get? And I firmly believe that we have to prioritize as a city, as a personal value for myself as well, the lower income part. That's the hardest to get. So a lot of people want to dodge it. It's really hard. But if we don't do that, we're not going to be diverse and we're going to look like Hillsborough. I don't want to live in Hillsborough. So that's number one. And when you get done with number one, you don't immediately go and say that therefore the rest of them are studio apartments because then we can meet arena quotas. That's a disaster. We have to move on to family housing, et cetera, relative to neighborhoods in my last nine seconds here. That's a fundamental plank of what I'm saying is that we have to build true neighborhoods with true urban planning, even if it's from scratch, including all the amenities that you mentioned, Justin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Julie Lithcott-Hames.
I think we're all envisioning how we could actually pretty functionally work together, depending on which three of us is elected. And I think that's pretty great for Palo Alto. I want to start by busting some myths. I talked to a Channing House resident. It was like, when my family moved here in 1929, you had a single-family home next to a duplex, next to a bungalow. You had a doctor, next to a teacher, next to a plumber. It's sort of a myth that our single-family neighborhoods have never been more dense. We still have them now. Second, character isn't only a thing in old Palo Alto or the North Side. When I hear councils say they're excited to put thousands of units on San Antonio, I'm saying to them, don't you put it on the South Side if it isn't pretty enough for the North Side. Equality. Let's lift the city together to meet the needs that we have. I agree, we need a, whether it's a specific pant plan or a precise plan or a comprehensive area plan, we need a plan with vision for all of the amenities, the walkability. We can do it. Someone suggested at council last night, putting housing on top of town and country. I like that idea.
Thank you, Julie. And Doria Suma.
Could you repeat the question? Thanks.
Sure. How do you balance the seemingly conflicting desires or wants of residents to plan for more housing, plan for more affordable housing, and preserve the character of existing neighborhoods?
Okay, thank you for repeating that. So I think that how you do that is you have good development standards for new projects. We don't want people in parts of Palo Alto to feel like they're living in a totally different city than the rest of us who already lived here. And since I live in a college terrace neighborhood, which most of us lovingly refer to as collage terrace, I think in this neighborhood, we know that you don't make neighborhood character by having a whole bunch of people who make the same amount of money living together. That's not what neighborhood character is to me. Neighborhood character is more of the places you gather outside, parks, schools, even shopping areas, and maybe churches. That's what neighborhood character is. And there's a lot of different types of neighborhoods in Palo Alto. Everyone is free to live with what they want. But when it comes to building this new, different kind of high-rise denser housing, those people deserve the same type of things that make Palo Alto livable and great for everyone else.
Thank you, Dorian. Thanks to all the candidates. I'm definitely hearing some common themes among you. Moving back to Janati.
Yeah, thanks, everybody for sticking to the timeline. But by the way, you guys have been great so far. I'm going to switch from residential to commercial development for a second because I think that's one of the areas that really differentiates Palo Alto from some of neighboring cities. As you guys, I'm sure probably know, places like Mountain Redwood City often incentivize housing with area plans that also include commercial growth. Palo Alto doesn't do that. In fact, here there's pretty strict caps on office development. So my question is, what, if anything, should be changed about Palo Alto's approach to office development? And we're going to start with Alex Combs on this.
Yeah, so we need to create more housing to meet the housing element. One way to incentivize housing construction versus office construction is definitely tweaking limits that we have when it comes to density, FAR, and similar. Do we need office, more office space potentially, instead of focusing on limiting or having a cap on the office space? I would rather focus on what type of offices. Potentially, we could, we could, you know, we could add office space for small businesses. We are known for the center of innovation, you know, the birth of Silicon Valley. So I would like to see office space for small businesses that would be incubated, incubated in our town. And I would like to refer to grow and go model where small businesses would start here and as soon as, you know, they, they are big enough, they would move somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so far we have a thumbs up for Berlin game and a thumbs down from Hillsborough for anybody keeping count. And we're going to go to Lisa Porcel now with the same question about Palo Alto's approach to office development.
Yeah, you know, I feel viscerally a need for more housing as we've been talking about tonight. I don't feel a visceral need for more office space. That said, I'm not really quite yet willing to rule it out because we might need to allow for a bit of office space in order to meet our housing targets. And, you know, Palo Alto is an ecosystem and businesses are part of our, of our community and businesses need customers. So I think that it's one of those issues that's really tough and thorny and and one that as it comes before council, I will be trying to listen to all sides and take a really careful look at.
Great. Brian Hammachek, some question.
I would say that we definitely don't need additional office space. If anything, we should start reducing our office space, start converting it to housing. Our jobs, housing imbalance is completely out of whack and something needs to be done about it. I think that more office space just means more traffic, just more strain on our infrastructure, on our public safety, especially if there's not housing so that they can live close by. So I think that until housing is addressed, we definitely do not need to focus on office space. If anything, we should be utilizing it as a way to incentivize housing.
Thank you, Ed Lowing.
Yes, one model that should not be used is the model that's been used by our neighbors in Mountain View and Redwood City, which has put up massive amounts of office in order to get a little bit of housing or even a lot of housing and further skew the imbalance between jobs and housing. That's a disaster. You're getting all kinds of kudos around the state about how wonderful that is. That's a disaster. You have more cop, you have more traffic or congestion and it's just continuing to spiral. That was also suggested as a way to get the great vision for Ventura fixed, which was also a disaster. And we don't, we want to be putting an office park in Ventura. We want to put a neighborhood in Ventura if we're going to re-envision it. I see no need right now for any more office. If somebody wants to try to convince me, I'll listen. I don't think the office caps are a problem at all. We just have to be focused on housing.
Great, thank you. And Julie Lithgow-Hames.
Yeah, just to add to what's been said, look, we have a 3-1 jobs, housing imbalance. We don't need more commercial growth, at least right now. Look, we've got a lot of businesses going virtual and that creates ghost towns in Palo Alto. So we've got to deal with that. Now, I understand San Francisco has put in place a fine. If a business is shuttered for too long, they're going to penalize that business or incentivize that business to get moving again. Our streets, our transit, our parks, our schools, our everything depends on this ecosystem thriving. So we can't have ghost businesses, just like we can't have ghost houses. So I'd like to see a mixed use overlay in some areas to add housing on top of commercial, create some vibrant commercial areas like Santana Row, maybe on the blighted El Camino. We could really have an exciting El Camino again, maybe even fix the potholes. I realize that's not our question. I'd like to see us incentivize small business owners, maybe even female owned, minority owned, queer owned. Let's get some folks here running stores. Let's get our businesses to pay a fair business tax. I'm in favor of, but should be higher.
Great, thank you so much. And Doria Suma.
So I am not in favor of building any more office that is not neighborhoods serving local small offices. That's what we need so people can walk to the doctor, to the dentist, to their accountant, et cetera. I would go much further and say that we, you know, our housing imbalance, jobs housing imbalance is greater than Manhattan. Now, just think about that. It's crazy, out of control. So I don't think we need any new office. I certainly would love to know how much office is vacant now because of working from home due to COVID. And I think we need to evaluate it. I think those landlords who have existing vacancies deserve to have those vacancies filled first. Look at Friesite. Friesite was zoned RM30 for 27 or 28 years. What do we get now? We get a reduction of like 70,000 square feet of retail. A lot of housing, that's good, but we get a lot more office. We don't need office, any more office in the research park either. I'd like to see us change that up and use the last million square feet for housing, schools and parks.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Vicky Binker.
Well, to spice it up, since I'm last, this just reminds me of a lot of, you know, cliches. You know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it with respect to the office cap. And if you're in a hole, quit digging. You know, we put an office cap in place. It has been been helpful. And it's not a complete cap as in zero growth. There is limited growth of 50,000 square feet per year. So we have some flexibility if there is a need or particular projects that we think are helpful to our community for whatever reason. So we can do that, but it has helped us make some progress in this imbalance that all of us know and struggle with. So I support maintaining that. And like I said, you know, if you're in that hole, quit digging, let's not make it worse. Let's make it better. So I would support continuing that.
Great, thank you so much. And now for our final question in the 62nd round, I will hand it back over to Jocelyn.
A number of our readers expressed some concerns about Palo Alto losing its sense of community and unity. So this question goes to building bridges. The question is, the statement first, divisive rhetoric, characterizations of people with differing opinions and either or thinking can lead to a spirit of division in a community. So please tell us about a time when you sought to understand people with very different views from yours and you achieved a productive outcome. We're going to start with Lisa Forcell.
Thanks for the question. Obviously, I need a moment to think about it. I'm debating between drawing on some things from my utility commission experience or my professional experience. I guess I'll go with something from my professional experience. The, I feel like I've spent my whole career in situations where there were people who felt very strongly on opposite sides of an issues, artists or engineers who wanted very different approaches to a problem. And my go-to method is to gather people together, preferably representatives from each community in a room, face to face, talking it out, finding common ground, asking why over and over again, until you understand like what is underlying the strong feelings on either side, always using respectful language and appreciating everybody in the room has, you know, their right to their point of view and ultimately finding a path forward.
Thank you, and thanks for being the first person to answer this question. I know the drawing from one's own experience can be, make you think for a minute. Brian Hammachek.
Yeah, having grown up in Palo Alto many decades ago, I would say that there was definitely a lot more of a diverse population back then. And it was one of the most beneficial things that it could have happened to me as a child, growing up in that kind of environment where I was exposed to so many different opinions and viewpoints and learned how to actually navigate that. Whereas I think we're losing that. And that's something that needs to be, you know, fought to be maintained in Palo Alto. And there's many avenues for doing that. Affordable housing, we need to make it so that our teachers can still live here, so that our firefighters can live here, that it's not just all one type of profession, basically.
Thank you, Brian. Ed Lowing.
At first, I thought your question was about community dispute, but you're talking more about any kind of resolution of dispute, I think.
Any kind of trying to understand the other side.
Yeah, I think I saw that most in my business career when I had a couple of clashes between, you know, two execs that weren't getting along. What was the deal here? And it's not sort of an amazing example, but it's just, you've got to figure out back to how do you solve any problem? Let's define it so that we're not off on the wings here dealing with something that's not really the problem. Because if you don't get there with anything, including any issue that comes up before council, you're not going to get anywhere. But once you get there, you either find a way to work together or you don't. But at least you have facts on the table and emotions on the table and, you know, kind of deal with it from there. I think if we're talking about community, it does go back to the same thing of we need more diversity in our communities so that there isn't a lot of separation. But I do want to throw in that I've been to a lot of communities since the Fourth of July parade. And they all love it here and they all love their communities and they don't hate any of other communities. So maybe that is being overemphasized. There's a lot of happy people in Palo Alto.
Thank you, Ed. And just to reiterate, the question is, tell us about a time that you sought to understand someone of a different viewpoint and achieved a productive outcome. Julie.
I'm going to talk about how I failed at that and learned from it. It's a little bit of a spin, but I think it makes the point. Look, I'm black and bi racial. I grew up mostly in white spaces. I was always the other. I wrote a book about that. It's called Real American, a memoir about what it feels like to be the outsider. So I understand what it's like to be not included or not presumed to belong. When we bought our house on Maybell Way in the Green Acres Two neighborhood in 2000, it was as is. It was damaged, had a six inch slope from front to back, cracked windows, cracked geminis. We had to fix it up or completely rebuild. We chose to rebuild. We didn't have many dollars left. The city approved it. We went through voluntary design review. The neighbors, as they saw it going up, hated it. They put a nasty petition in our mailbox, said our house was ugly. It was a cruel process that I will never forget. And I will always be an advocate for people whose neighbors are trying to tell them they can't lead their lives. I tried to convince them by being on the right side of the facts and the law. What I learned as I got older is listen, be vulnerable, create space for humans to share. If they're angry, they're afraid. Let's start there.
Thanks very much. Appreciate that. Doria Suma.
So honestly, I consider myself a total expert in sitting with people who I disagree with and still maintaining a civil attitude and trying to move forward. And that would be the Suma Family Dining Room Table and the Planning and Transportation Commission. So I think the problem is, I think a lot of us want the same things. We disagree about how to get there. And I'm going to say, stop calling each other names. The name calling in this country and this city has gotten really, really out of control and it is nasty. I also think we should stop assuming what other people mean, what their motivation is. And I think we should stop telling people they are afraid of change when they just want someone to listen to them. So I'll leave it at that.
Fair enough. Vicky Binker.
I'd love 10 minutes to talk about this one, but I'll stick to the one. I'm a recovering litigator because you talk about divisive rhetoric. That's what we do. I became a mediator. The U.S. International Trade Commission appointed me to mediate trade disputes. The federal courts appointed me to mediate disputes where people are literally mad enough about it to make a federal case out of it. I then took those mediation skills and applied them to public policy with a group called Convergence and convened health policy leaders in Sacramento. I had conservative Lon He Chen from Hoover. I had someone from Cal's Labor Center. I had doctors. I had insurers. I had consumers at the Black Health Network, the Pan-Etnic Health Network. We all sat there and we didn't agree until we did, after lots of sharing about our underlying values and needs and being candid and honest and committed to getting past them. I then went on and founded Sibling Cities USA. So I'm trying to do that with our country. We need to knit this country back together. We put each other in boxes. We think we know each other and we don't. And I'm working to change that.
Thank you so much. Alex Combs.
Yes, as you could imagine, in my line of business, the two parties, you know, the sellers and buyers disagree on dozens of issues. And we always ratify. I am an open-minded person and I've chosen to have and to commit to a non-partisan approach, which is, I believe, very critical for a city council job. Recently, I was exposed to the business tax proposal. And initially, I thought that it would be a big impact on small businesses, which is one of my top priorities. And I believe I might be the only candidate with a small businesses as a priority. But later on, I found out that through sort of things that, you know, got tweaked in the business proposal, small businesses got protected. And I switched my opinion to supporting the business tax proposal, especially since the funds go straight to areas where we really need the funding for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are going to move now to a quick fire round. So switching from the main entrees to, I suppose it's dessert. We will get 15 seconds for the answers and we've tried to narrow the question. So it really is sort of a which side of the line do you stand on and what's your reasoning for that? There are many different topics that were submitted to us and Janati will start with the very first one.
Yeah, get pumped. We're going to talk about the city gym. And this question comes from a resident who's seven years old and is retired from the high-tech industry. Simple question, what is your position on a city gym? And we will start with Brian Hammachek.
I'm a really big supporter of it. I think if you look to Menlo Park and you see what's been done there, if we could replicate that, I think that that would be absolutely amazing.
Great. Ed Lowing.
Yes, very strong supporter. That came up in our surveys when we did the Parks Master Plan. Very, very high demand. And of course, there's very little supply. So totally supported.
Thank you. Julie Lithgow-Hames.
Let's put it at Coverly with a nice cafe next door, really healthy cafe for people who want a nice power shake after they work out.
Great. Doria Suma.
City gym is a great idea. I think the location is key.
Vicky Binker.
Love the idea of a city gym, physical fitness, public health. It supports it. And it's a place where we can come together and enjoy each other. So I like it as a social center and a place to support public health. Yes.
Excellent. And Alex Combs.
100%. I'm an avid athlete and I belong to Form Fitness, which you might know might be, we would be closing in December. So I have to look for a new gym. We don't have a gym in downtown. And as Julie mentioned, Coverly could be a great place. So yes, Coverly or maybe the current police location that might, that will be relocated, might be a great spot next to a cafe. Thank you.
And Lisa Forcell.
I think a new gym would be a great asset to the city. I agree, we have to be careful where we put it. Coverly would be a great location. I worry if we put it across the freeway, it'll be hard for teens and youth to get to or people who don't own a car. So if we put it there, let's make sure we've got a shuttle with regular service to wherever we put the gym.
This next question comes from someone who is concerned about our small businesses. What's your top idea for helping small businesses operate more easily in Palo Alto? Ed Lowing.
Top idea is to buy local. I'd like to see a campaign that imitates consumer behavior, which means that we hit the sales taxes, of course, as a city, but the businesses survive. And I think that needs, you know, some backing from the city and I think it can work.
Thank you. Julie Lithgow-Hames.
I love Ed's idea. I've been thinking of something similar, a social media campaign with a certain hashtag, maybe some stickers that go on the windows that we really get young people excited about. We need young people to move here, live here, shop here, send their kids to school here. Let's get them using social media to tout local small businesses.
Thanks, Doria Suma.
I'm going to talk about something that affects California Avenue. It's hard to explain in 15 seconds, but it has a totally different parking structure that keeps legal uses away because of the nuances of how it's parked. And we need to change. I've been talking about changing this for years and it's why we have too many of a certain kind of thing on the avenue.
Okay, Vicky Binker.
Let's do things to get people out on the streets so that then they go patronize these businesses. Let's have more public events. We have a lot of art fairs. Let's do that. Maybe we have scavenger hunts for kids. A friend, I'm going to borrow this idea, suggested we put pianos around our downtown areas. Let's get people out there to patronize those businesses.
I would totally play one of those. Alex Combs.
Yes, we need these businesses to be connected to each other via Chamber of Commerce or other platforms. And they should be sharing resources and work together towards the same goals. I met with board members of Chamber of Commerce and we shared the same ideas. And I hope I have a chance to work with them in order to help our local community of small business owners.
Thank you. Lisa Forcell.
First, we definitely need to reach out to the small business community and find out what they think would help them. But on top of that, make it really easy for people to get to the small businesses, shuttles, bikes, bike parking. I think we could close Cal Ave and landscape it and make it really beautiful and a place for public events that would draw customers as well.
And Brian Hamachek.
I 100% agree with Lisa. I 100% agree with Lisa. We should close California Avenue. We should turn that into a really nice European style plaza, maybe even downtown University Avenue as well. Um, I think that those are two things that would really change the character and really support small businesses.
Thank you all.
And from business to business tax. The question is, would you have voted to put the business tax on the ballot as it currently is? Why or why not? And we're going to start with Julie Lithcott-Hames.
Janati, as you know better than most, I actually stood up at the city council and I said, let's not have a bake sale. Let's have a proper business tax. I'm in favor of the tax. Businesses should pay their fair share. We have billion dollar businesses here. They should be paying us a million dollars each. Too bad they're not.
I'm in favor of bake sales, but I see your point. Uh, Doria Suma.
Yep, totally support a business tax. It's been a long time coming, much too long. I wish it was higher, but you know, we got to start where we're starting.
Great. Vicki Binker.
Yes, I support it as well. Um, I, it, it goes for great things, affordable housing, grade separation, retaining public safety. It's what we need. And I think that businesses might take a pride in paying their fair share. And since we're exempting the small ones, we're, we're working with the ones who can afford it.
Excellent. And Alex Comson.
Uh, yes, in, in fact, I was the first one to speak in front of city council in regards to the business tax. Um, uh, it, it will be in line with the, the cities surrounding us. Um, and, uh, it's definitely protecting small businesses. Thank you.
And Lisa Forcell.
I am strongly in favor of Measure K, the business tax. It's progressive. It protects small businesses. Uh, I wouldn't have put the cap on it, but let's not let the perfect be the enemy of the good enough. I urge everyone to vote for the business tax in November.
Great. Uh, Brian Hamich.
Yeah, I was originally hesitant because I didn't want to harm, uh, businesses anymore, but, uh, since the square footage minimum was put in place, I definitely support this, uh, tax and think that it's, uh, well overdue.
Wonderful. And, um, Ed Lowing.
I'm going with the cup is half full. We got some business tax instead of, instead of none. Uh, it's not where I think we should be. It was never going to hurt the small businesses, but that got even better, uh, as Lisa mentioned. Um, so I think we've got something to work with here, although $3 million doesn't, a year doesn't put up too much affordable housing.
Thank you.
Our next topic is the functioning of city government. The question is, what letter grade would you give city manager Ed Chikata? And why? The first person is Doria Suma.
Oh boy. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what my school, my college did. I graduated from the Art Institute of Chicago. It was pass fail and I'm going to give him a pass.
And why is that?
Um, because he hasn't failed.
Next person is Vicki Binker.
So I'm pleased by the direction that's gone, that's happened between the relationship between council and the man and, and Ed in the last year or so. So, um, I think that that's, the council has clear authority for setting policy and oversight, and I think he's responded well to that. Um, I'll give him a pass. I'll give him a, I'll give him a B. How's that?
Thanks for choosing a letter. Alex Comson.
Uh, yes, I will definitely give him a pass. Uh, he definitely keeps things, uh, running, uh, but I think we can improve when it comes to, um, getting our community involved. Um, organizations like Palo Alto Networks, I think they should have a, uh, a, a bigger voice, uh, in our community.
Okay. Uh, Lisa Forcell.
I believe the Palo Alto schools are increasingly moving to objective standards. So I will say that Ed Chikata, uh, meets the requirements of a city manager. I think he's doing a decent job. There's always room for improvement. Uh, but I appreciate, um, some of the, uh, initiatives that he has made to, uh, work more closely with city council.
Thank you. And Brian Hamich.
Um, I would give him a, uh, about a C. Uh, I think that there's the possibility for improvement, but currently I'm not sure that he really understands, uh, the same Palo Alto that I do. Uh, I think he still is operating like this as San Jose, you know why?
Uh, thank you. Ed Lowing.
The city council and city manager are actually a partnership. So both can only kind of function to the extent that, that both function. Uh, so I would, I would give him a B at this point and think he's really trying to cooperate and could, could get some help from the council on prioritizing so that he knows that there's not 50 different priority As.
Sure. Okay. Julie Lithcott-Hames.
I kind of reject the premise of the question. I feel bad for anybody who's being graded in public in front of 300 people. I have no basis for grading Ed Chikata. I've met him. He seems like a really smart, kind person, but I haven't, uh, had the degree of involvement others have. So I'm going to sit this one out and say, please, let's not ask the same question about council.
Oh, we got to check the next one then. Just kidding. Janati.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think one of the city councils' great responsibilities is to hire the city manager who pretty much hires everyone else in the city except for three people. So I think that question was reasonable, but let's go on to the next one. Um, campaign finance. Many cities in our area, including Mountain View, have campaign finance limits for political candidates. Uh, do you support campaign finance limits, including caps on contributions from individuals, caps on total expenditures, or greater disclosure of independent expenditures? What of those do you specifically endorse, if any? And we're going to start with Vicki Binker on this one.
Thank you, Janati. Um, I do support caps on individual contributions. In fact, I've taken one in this race where you could by law, give me 4,900 bucks, but I'm only going to let you give me a thousand. Um, I don't, at this point, like overall caps on the total you can raise while independent expenditures are out there because they can dwarf what you raise. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Alex Comson.
Yes, I would definitely support that. It's, I believe it's ridiculous to, to raise a hundred K or so for a small political company like, uh, like, uh, Palo Alto. Uh, individual contributors, yeah, could be capped at 500, maybe small businesses at a thousand and this total campaign budget about 20K. I think I would support that.
Thank you. Um, Lisa Porcel.
Yeah, I definitely support, um, campaign finance, uh, limits, a cap on contributions like 500 or a thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, caps on expenditures would be fine with me as well. 20, 30, 40, 50K. Um, you know, I think it's, if it applies to everybody, everybody can work within much, uh, smaller campaign budget and it would be beneficial.
Thank you. Uh, Brian Hamich.
Oh, I definitely support this. Currently there's, you know, 25 to 50 individual contributors that are having an outsized influence on things. And I think uh, limited even $250 per person and just make it so that the candidates that have the widest support have the most, uh, voice.
Thank you. Ed Lowing.
The biggest issue, if you're looking at trying to level the playing fields, are the independent expenditure committees and the parties. Um, so if a party puts out a brochure, it's worth $10,000. I should, I think that should be declared as an in-kind contribution to the campaign. Uh, I don't think that you can legally do that for independent expenditures, but I'd look at the big issues here before getting to the littler issues. Time's up.
Thank you. Julie Lithcott-Hames.
I'm very interested in campaign finance reform. Citizens United is ruining our democracy right here at home. Like Lisa and Vicki, I have a $1,000 cap on contributions to our campaign. I would love to see a total expenditure cap as long as there isn't a loophole or we can close the loophole for IEs.
Thank you very much. And Doria Suma.
Thank you. Um, I do believe we could have caps on individual contributions, but I think since we cannot cap, uh, independent expenditures and in-kind contributions, it's sort of meaningless. Um, so until we can, and I don't think you can legally do that now. So until we figure that out, I think it's, it's, it doesn't, with those huge loopholes, it doesn't make sense.
We want the next question. Thank you.
We're talking about the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. Do you support the proposed development agreement for the former Frye's site that the city has negotiated with the Zabrada organization? And why or why not? Alex Comson.
I, I believe Ventura is one of those, uh, opportunities that we really, really have to take advantage of. And I think, uh, we should, uh, uh, potentially look for more housing in general at all levels, especially affordable housing. So I would like to see, uh, more housing in, uh, in that side.
Thank you, Lisa Forcell.
The, uh, North Ventura area has a long and storied history. And so I, I don't really want to go back and undo the years of process that took place trying to come up with a plan. That said, I would have wanted more housing, more land set aside for affordable housing, um, and a little more green space.
Thank you. Brian Hamich.
I have to think that we can do better than this, uh, current plan. I don't want to undo all the work that's been done either, but, uh, it's disappointing that there's going to be almost no retail there. So they're going to be kind of an island, uh, to themselves. Uh, too much R and D space, uh, not enough affordable housing, not enough housing.
Alrighty. Ed Lowing.
Yeah, this is one that's really not a 15 second question. Uh, it took years to get to the first proposal, which thankfully was shot down by council. And I think they've made, uh, some good progress here, particularly getting parks, open space. It's being planned like a neighborhood. Uh, but it's in the beginning stages. It's going to be vetted with PTC and ARB. So I think the, the jury's still out on this one, but they've made good progress.
Fair enough. Julie Lithcott-Hames.
It needs to be said that Ventura is the historic neighborhood where black people and Asian people were allowed to live when they couldn't live elsewhere in Palo Alto. I like the 100% affordable housing because it gives us a lot of units. I just want to be sure it's designed, integrated with the townhomes and the green space, so it doesn't feel like segregation.
All right. Doria Suma.
So as a veteran of the NBCAP group, um, it, it, it doesn't look like what that group recommended and wanted. What's, what's being proposed now? There's some good things about it and some bad things. I was hoping for, uh, a repurposed cannery building that really honored, um, Thomas Fung Chu. I'm already out of time. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. Vicki Binker.
All right. Um, so there's some good things in here, um, that there is respect for historical attributes and it does include affordable housing. It does have some green space, but there are so many people on all sides who are unhappy about it that it's unfortunate the process kind of turned out that way after so much effort. Um, that's, I'm out of time.
All right then. I think we're going to move on to, um, audience Q and A at this point. Um, we've gotten 74 questions in the Q and A, some of which are repeated. Um, and Janati will choose the first one. It'll be a 15 second answer unless he says otherwise.
Let's go with 15 seconds. Even though I do recognize that none of these questions are 50 second answers, but we're trying to get through a lot of topics here. Um, so one of the questions that was asked, um, in the Q and A is, what is your vision for deteriorating Coverly? And why? And Justin, if you could remind me who started, uh, the last round?
Alex started last time.
Okay. So we're going to start with Lisa Forcell this time. So your vision for Coverly.
That's a lot for 15 seconds. My main vision is that we not just leave it there with peeling paint falling apart for another decade. Uh, let's make a plan. Let's make it be a vibrant community space. Let's retain some educational facilities. Let's, uh, see if we can get some affordable housing in there and let's keep some athletic fields. It's a great space. We should make it sing.
Thank you. And Brian Hamich. Coverly.
Yeah, I agree entirely. I think that it's, uh, too big of a question to answer 15 seconds, but that the, the key is that we not just leave it as it currently is and let it, uh, continue to go to waste because it is such a valuable site.
Thank you. Ed Lowing.
Yeah, now that the school district has made some decisions, it kind of opens the, uh, gives us a green light to go forward there. Um, the emphasis should be on community, both externally and internally, meaning, you know, the nonprofit spaces are wonderful. I was there last week and it's fallen apart, but it's still vibrant. Um, it's got to be refurbished. That's the perfect split space for real community, uh, in South Palo Alto.
Thank you. Um, Julie Lithcott-Hames.
We drove our daughter to Dance Connection and back forever in her childhood. I know those back alleyways. This is an example of leadership gridlock. It makes me sad. I want to bring the school district back to the table. We need a true destination on the south side and Coverly could be it with all the things people have mentioned.
Great. And Doria Suma.
Yeah, this is a fantastic asset for the whole city and wonderfully located in South Palo Alto. It is a bit tattered, but it's beautifully loved and used. And I think we need to get to a point where we, uh, can decide what we want to do with it and fix it up. I don't know when that's going to be.
Thank you. And Vicki Binker.
So I think we have to, um, we have to move this forward. Um, you know, we have the city's parcel. We're talking about a land swap. Let's figure out if that's the case. Once we figure out how much land we have, let's start. Love to, you know, if the, if the school wants to come in more whole hog, great, but if not, let's go. This is a gem or it could be a gem. We need to restore it to that shiny status.
Thank you so much. And last for this question, Alex Comson.
Yes, I'm 100% for a vibrant community center with obviously a gym, as we talked, a coffee shop and so forth. I'm also in a favor of the idea of, uh, the city buying some land or swapping land, uh, the Palo Alto, so this school district, I believe, uh, seven or eight, eight cars could be added to what we have would be fantastic.
Thank you.
Our next topic is, uh, the citywide fiber network. Do you support the build out of the citywide fiber network? We'll start with Brian Hamich. 15 seconds.
I'm, uh, definitely a supporter of, uh, building out the fiber network. I think that, uh, it's, this is Palo Alto or the center of Silicon Valley. We should definitely have, uh, already done this, but we don't even know what kind of benefits this is going to bring, but it definitely should be prioritized.
Thank you. Ed Lowing.
Yeah, well, it's highly appealing, uh, because who wouldn't want to give up their Comcast? My goodness. Uh, but the question is, um, you know, do we want to run another utility? Do we want to take on the investment? Do we want to work through to get to the return on investment? Do we want to hire that many people on staff? Or do we want to outsource it? So this is one where the devil is definitely in, in the details. Uh, but it's highly appealing. Early polling says that, you know, it looks pretty, pretty good. Uh, so thanks.
Yeah. Julie.
I'm coming to you from my 96 square foot prefab in my backyard where I work as a writer. And in the pandemic, I had such bad wifi. People like, where are you, Julie? And I was like Palo Alto. They're like Palo Alto has bad wifi. I was like, don't get me started. I have Comcast and AT&amp;T because if one of them goes, then at least I can try the other. Yes to fiber. Start it here, please, and Green Acres Two.
Alrighty. Uh, Doria Suma.
Yes to fiber. Um, even though I still can't, it's been explained to me so many times. I still can't understand what it is actually. But I, the devil is in the details. The question is, should the city operate it as a new utility? Or should we let folks like AT&amp;T come in and do it?
All right. Vicki Binker.
Dory, we'll talk. My first patent case involved fiber optics, but, uh, yes, I think that, that we should have this because of its reliability. I think we can do it in a cheaper way. I would like to see the data and the economic modeling, uh, before we take on this other utility, but my strong instinct is to do this.
Okay. And Alex Comson.
I think this project requires lots of resources and, uh, I don't view this as a top priority. I believe the private sector is addressing the high-speed internet, uh, as we speak. I would rather use the funds for, uh, uh, other things like, uh, secondary power sources that will address, uh, um, mitigating the risk of wildfires and, and, uh, other topics.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Lisa Forcell.
Municipal fiber, uh, has the potential to be cheaper, faster, more secure, more reliable. Uh, it does appear that the business case is there. I think we need to make sure we start the rollout in the neighborhoods that have the worst service from the incumbents, AT&amp;T and Comcast. Uh, make sure it remains viable as we go.
Thank you all.
Next question. Um, should Palo Alto keep California Avenue pedestrian street or reopen it to cars? And we're going to start with Ed on this one.
Starting to think, okay, yeah. Um, I, I, of, of course, you know, I always like to read all the research, so I might, I read all the research, but I'm inclined to look favorably at that because the store layout is such that it's in front, cars are in back. There's a short walk over to California Avenue, so I don't think the retailers will be hurt. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Julie Lithcott-Hames.
One of my esteemed fellow conversationalists here mentioned it should be like a European, uh, pedestrian thoroughfare. I love that. Um, and I think we got to encourage those small businesses to keep different hours, keep hours that are, you know, they open later in the day and go well into the evening so they can be there to serve up their wares to people having dinner and listening to live music.
I'm sorry. Doria Suma.
Sorry. I live very close to Cal Ave and I've heard both sides of this argument, and I'm going to keep an open mind until the decision has to be made because it's very divisive on the avenue. It's different for different kinds of businesses. So I'm just going to keep an open mind at this point.
And Vicky Vinker.
So this is one where those problem solving, bridge building skills that everyone was talking about could come into play because I would love to see it as this avenue, pedestrian avenue, but I know there are legitimate concerns of the ground floor retail on Cal Ave. I would like to think we can engineer around that, that we could help them and build it in a way that augments their sales and helps them thrive too.
Thank you. And Alex Comson.
Basically, my conversations with small business owners such as owners of Italic and Taron. I believe it's preferred to have it closed. I think it's great for small businesses and like all of these candidates mentioned, it gives us some European feels. I would be all about pleasing the small business owners to make sure that we have a vibrant California avenue.
Thank you. And Lisa Forcell.
As I said earlier, I think Cal Ave would be a great place and not just to close it for cars, but to really landscape it and add amenities. You know, it should be bricks or cobblestones or pavers. It should have trees, maybe a place structure, really make it a wonderful community space that draws people. And I hope that the businesses would be along for the ride.
Excellent. And last but not least, Brian Hamatchek.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever talked to anyone in Palo Alto who isn't as supportive by keeping it closed. It's just so much nicer now. But it needs to be done so that it actually is a plaza and not just a street that's closed. And I think that the small businesses would actually benefit from the increased traffic. So it's a win-win.
My next question comes from a member of our bicycling community who says that the bike lanes, even the painted bike lanes can be unsafe when cars park in them, forcing the bicyclists to go around. Would you support a second curb with cars parked outside of that as is seen in other cities? So a second curb away from the main curb and then towards traffic and then having cars parked there. I believe we're starting with Julie Lithcot Hames.
Hi, what a great question. Truly, I have no idea. I'm not a biker. So I would want to listen more to the people who have these concerns, to the people who spent lots of time on the biking and planning transportation commission. I'll listen, but not lead on this one.
Thank you, Julie. Doria Suma.
Thanks. So we've looked at this at the planning commission and you always want to get the best bike car separation that you can. The only problem is sometimes the streets aren't wide enough to do that. So yes, to whenever we can do this and figure it out. Class four bike lanes all the way.
Thank you. Vicky.
So when I first saw this in Copenhagen, Denmark, I was wowed. It is amazing. It works really well. It is stunning. You've got your pedestrians, your bikes, your cars. And the weather ain't so great there and they ride year round because they have these paths. I'd love to see it here, but I am concerned about the width. I am concerned about how we would do it and I'd like to see it modeled out.
Okay, Alex Comson.
Yes, I'm 100% for bike safe routes. I spent half of my life in Europe, so yes, I would like to see that in place. However, I'm a bit concerned as a father when it comes to safety and I would like to see a greater separation between cars and bikes.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Forcell.
Yeah, like Vicky, I love European cities where they've really mastered separating bikes from traffic. Here in Palo Alto, I think the key is to prototype it first with paint, with traffic cones, with plastic bollards to make sure it's going to work before we commit to pouring concrete and creating new curbs.
Okay. Brian Hamatchek, please.
It seems like a perfectly reasonable idea to me. My only concern would be the width of the actual lanes for driving, if those are going to be decreased to a point where that becomes a concern, but otherwise it seems reasonable.
And Ed Lowing.
Yeah, Doria recapped where we are on the perspective of PTC. It definitely can be done. There's always money involved. I think instead of actually just prototyping it, as Lisa just said, at some point, you know, you'd actually want to do an actual one to see how it worked and you could just do that in a kind of a pilot situation. So you could test it that way.
All right. And I'm turning it over to Janati now.
Okay, so I guess we're going to go for a final open ended question. Everyone's going to have 60 seconds for this one. And the question is, tell us about one challenge facing the city that we haven't discussed tonight and what you want to do about it. And we're going to start, sorry, Justin, did we start with Doria Suma last time?
I think we started with Julie last time.
I'm sorry. We're going to start with Doria Suma for this one. Right. So. Thank you.
So we have a park dedication ordinance in the city of Palo Alto that says that protects parks from being used for other uses because they can only be undedicated by a vote of the people. And we have a number of parks that it's this kind of low hanging fruit that's just been sitting around. People have been talking about it forever. And some of the parks, there's, there's 17, I think, that are still undedicated. Some of them probably aren't appropriate to be dedicated, but there are a lot of them, such as the Winter Lodge, that should be dedicated. And I think that it wouldn't take a lot of staff time to do it. I'm sort of making this assumption about that. Ed Lowing probably knows more about that from his work on the Parks and Rec, but that's something I think we could do that we haven't talked about tonight.
Thank you. And Vicky Vinker.
So we've talked a lot about Measure K, the business tax. I want to talk for a second about Measure L, the gas transfer measure and because it could fund libraries and I am hung up on libraries. I love libraries. Our town loves libraries. But we've had to close, reduce the hours substantially. And there are workforce issues and other challenges, but I would like to see us restore some of those hours. That's where our community members meet. That's where families go to do things together. That's where working families take their children on weekends, but on a Sunday, you can't go to a library in Palo Alto. So I'd like to, to work with the libraries to try to restore this funding in a way that's helpful for them, that supports their workforce issues and also talk to them about possibilities for rejiggering schedules so that maybe one of our big libraries is open on a Saturday, the other on a Sunday and that a family can take their child to the library any day of the week here in Palo Alto.
Great. Thank you very much. And next up is Alex Comson.
Yes, I would like to mention city owned properties in general and our approach to a master plan when it comes to real estate. I would like to emphasize again that we have to get into a driving seat or so. We cannot be at the mercy of developers in order to achieve our goals. We have to take advantage of our resources. We have to have add more resources when it comes to real estate in city council and the city hall in general. I think I would support the idea of having a real estate office development that will address all of these issues. We are talking about tens of billions of dollars of real estate that we'd have to manage over the next few years. And we don't really have a real estate office development in-house. We have to look at other organizations like Stanford. Everything they do when it comes to real estate, they touch gold. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel and we have to do better than that at the city council level.
Great. Thank you. Lisa Forcell.
We have touched on a few topics related to climate change already. We've talked about housing, which will reduce commutes. We've talked about bicycling. We have not talked about enforcing Palo Alto's existing ordinance on leaf blowers. They're noise nuisance and they're terrible for air quality and they're surprisingly significant emitter of greenhouse gases. And then also in climate change, we haven't talked about adapting to sea level rise. It is adapting to climate change, which unfortunately is inevitable at this point. We need to be planning for sea level rise and for wildfires. We need to underground the power lines in the foothills so they don't spark a wildfire. We need to harden our infrastructure by the bay, our utilities, equipment, our water quality control plant. We need to widen the area under creek bridges to protect against flooding. We need to build a horizontal levee to protect against storm surges and improve wildlife habitat. We need to incentivize conversion to low water landscaping while continuing to care for our tree canopy. And we need to keep looking into recycled water, gray water, onsite water recycling, et cetera.
Great. Thank you so much. And now Brian Hamatchek.
So definitely nowhere near as important as everything that Lisa just mentioned, but one thing that popped into my mind and I think would have actually a pretty big impact on a lot of the residents here in a minor but meaningful way would be to add grass to all of the dog parks in the dog runs in the parks in Palo Alto. Right now, they're, they're all, most of them are just dirt. And so if it's rained in the last two days, you can't take your dog there because they'll just get filthy. You'll get filthy. It'd be such a simple fix that could have such a meaningful impact on I think a lot of dog owners in the city.
Thank you. Ed Lowing.
You only shift from dog parks to a controversy. And I want to just chat up for a minute about Stanford. They're one of the largest employers in the area. They're probably adding more jobs per unit than probably any other company. They're continuing to grow. There's more growth to come. And I would like to see them, they're very easy to work with on the housing element. Except for getting the numbers where I thought they should be. So I would like to see them step up some more to put on, up some more homes in the next current cycle. They've only signed up for 569 units over the next 10 years. And I think we should do more on that with them. There's a lot of space that Page Mill Road, Page Mill Square, sorry, Research Park, and even on campus to help us out with that. They're also asking for a 100 year moratorium from the county on the development, on the, on development in the foothills. We're asking for that. I mean, the county is. And they're asking for only 25 years. So I would like them to give us kind of further consideration in the general. I think we should find closer ways to work together in a true partnership. We all need.
Great. Thank you. And Julie with Cot Hames.
I want to talk about bring back the green shuttle to take kids to school so parents stop driving in cars to pick up and drop off lines, but I'm not. I'm going to talk about something else related to our kids, youth mental health. Look, I'm a gun mom. Nobody knows better than us that this issue has to be foregrounded. As a gun parent and a former Stanford dean, I know that our youth can face intense pressure and stress. And as the adults in the situation, we all have to do a much better job of modeling behaviors that support wellness. I've got a book and a TED Talk on this subject. I've served on the Board of Challenge Success, which has been a leader in this. As I like to say to our kids, you don't matter because you're brilliant. You matter because you breathe. It's not a policy question. It's a priorities question. It's a messaging question. So if elected, I'm going to establish a youth task force, ask youth what it feels like to grow up here, be brave enough to take their advice on what to do differently. And I'll partner with our schools clinicians, Project Safety Net and All Cove to make sure we're getting the job done.
Great. Thank you so much. And I think we're going to shift over to closing statements in a second. Just want to thank you all for very thorough and eloquent answers. Not to mention your complete mastery of the mute button for the past two hours. Well done. And I'm going to shift to Jocelyn now.
Yes, you've all been so gracious in answering all of our questions with our time limits. We now turn over 40 seconds, 45 seconds to each one of you to give your pitch as to why you should be on the city council. We'll start with Vicky Vinker.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for holding this tonight. We saw some differences tonight, but we also saw a lot of shared values. What residents want is for us to turn those values into action. Council needs to make things happen and not get stuck as we have with grade separation, Coverly, housing and more. To do that takes problem solving, persuasion and a focus on community above individual interests. That is where my experience lies. Over my 35 year career in the law, nonprofits, mediation and community service, I persuaded as a litigator, solved problems as a mediator and focused on community interest through the many nonprofits I have led. I hope to have the chance to apply those skills on our city council and I respectfully request your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Moving on to Alex Comson.
Hello, audience. I'm an open minded, data driven person who uses common sense. I listen, I adapt, and I'm here to serve the community. That's why I'm being endorsed by community members just like you and by family owned local businesses. My campaign is being run by a young team on a small budget with in-house expertise, but we are passionate about it and getting incredible results. The future of Palo Alto is really at stake here. 80% of city council issues are land use related. And that's precisely the expertise I bring to the table. I think city council would benefit from my land use expertise, my balanced approach to housing and my commitment to a nonpartisan focus. If you would like to see a more united, decisive and efficient city council, please join me in moving the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Forcell.
I want to thank The Weekly for hosting this forum. I want to thank my fellow candidates for your thoughtful answers and especially I want to thank the listeners for coming and contributing your questions. As I said at the opening, it's the people who make our community special. I'm running to serve the entire community, those who live here, those who work here, those who do business here, those who visit here. I believe my unique background, including service on the Utilities Commission, my professional background at the intersection of art, technology and management. My roots in the community, including PTA board service and my three master's degrees from Stanford. Uniquely prepare me to serve on city council. I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Brian Hamatchek.
Yeah, I believe that I'm the only candidate that was born and raised in Palo Alto. I've spent almost my entire life here, minus just a few years. And I think that that's a pretty unique perspective that is going to be very valuable in the council. I'm definitely not a politician. I just love this city and that's kind of where, you know, drives all of my decision making is what's best for the city. Thank you for hosting this forum and I respectfully ask for your vote, everyone.
Thank you, Brian. Next, Ed Lowing.
Thank you very much. You know, there are massive, complex problems in the city. We know that. We talked about a bunch of them tonight. And some council decisions that have to be made are going to affect the city for 5200 years. In my day job, I'm an executive recruiter. In every new search that I've ever done, the client says, I want you to find somebody who's already done a similar job before for many years in the same industry with demonstrated success because that predicts for me future success. No client ever said, just find me a smart person and we'll bring her up the learning curve. That's not how recruiting works. So for this candidate search that you're doing as a voter out there, I fit the job spec. I've been in Palo Alto government experience and had visible results on two commissions covering almost every issue in the city over the last 12 years. Very pleased that I'm a leader that's trusted by colleagues who appreciate my approach to debate and selected me to work with them for over five years as chair. So for this election, please bet on experience. Me. Thank you.
Julie with Cot Hames.
I've had three different careers, so I drive the executive recruiters crazy. I'm a Stanford grad and a Harvard educated lawyer. I know how to analyze, parse and argue, but I'm also a humanist with a career at Stanford on and on boards focusing on how to create an exciting vision, convene conversations about how to execute and then galvanize people to meet seemingly audacious goals, always with a focus on the underrepresented, underseen, marginalized. As a developer said just last night at council, transition and change aren't easy. It's council's job to articulate and inspiring why and galvanize our residents to feel bought in. So they'll say, count me in. I know it's time. I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you, Julie. And rounding us out, Doria Suma.
Okay, so Palo Alto is a community, not a commodity. One of my strongest values is my steadfast belief that the future of Palo Alto belongs, belongs primarily to the residents, not to developers who see the city in terms of profit. Residents do not want their homes overshadowed by imposing buildings. They do not want more traffic, degraded open space or stressed infrastructure. They do want to live in a welcoming, walkable and livable community. We will densify. That's not up for debate, but we must retain a livable city with excellent schools for present and future. with excellent schools for present and future residents. I want that to be my legacy and I want to thank The Weekly and everyone, all the candidates and everyone who watched this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you all and thanks. Thanks for your thoughtfulness. Thanks for your willingness to serve this city and to serve our residents. Um, you were extremely thoughtful today, so I greatly appreciate you sharing your perspectives. Um, and I look forward to the campaign season ahead. Um, I would also like to thank our co-sponsors again, the Palo Alto Chinese Parents Club and the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce. If you are interested in hearing from the school board candidates, we'll have that debate next Tuesday at seven o'clock. And in two weeks, we'll have the forum for the two candidates for Santa Clara County Sheriff. So thank you all again. Um, you can follow all of our coverage, including Janati's, on paloaltoonline.com. I wish you all a fantastic night. Thanks again.